All right, good evening. Thank you for joining us on the April 30th Board of Education meeting. If you could all join me with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we will begin tonight with the report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our April 30th Board of Education meeting. A big thank you to all the students, faculty, staff, administrators, and parents who joined us earlier this evening for the Critical Thinking Expo. We'll be hearing more about the expo and the work showcased momentarily from Dr. Murray and some very special guests. Since our last meeting on April 9th, the board convened on Tuesday, April 16th. There was a short agenda for the meeting. The board voted on the Southern Westchester BOSI's budget for the 24-25 school year, as was legally mandated. The board also voted to approve several new tax exemptions for senior citizens, disabled taxpayers, as well as volunteer firefighters. Fortuitously, we met with the seniors at the Rye Recreation Center this past Wednesday, so we were able to provide them with information about how to apply for the exemption. They also, and probably more enjoyably, were treated to some fantastic vocal performances by three of our high school students, accompanied by Mr. Snowden, and the group cheered for an encore by the students who sang beautifully. In addition to the seniors at Rye Rec, the Budget Roadshow has traveled to the Early Childhood Center at the synagogue, the RMSPO meeting, Christ Church Nursery School, and Rye Presbyterian Nursery School just yesterday. We're speaking tomorrow with the Chamber of Commerce, the Rye Y on Thursday evening, and the Milton PTO this coming Friday. Again, if you can't make any of these meetings, all of the 24-25 budget information, videos, and presentations are posted in a special area on the district website. Look for the link in the pop-up bubble that appears when you first land on the website. In other but related news, we have some 24-25 budget development information. With the approval of the New York State budget that has occurred since our last meeting, new state aid allocations were released late last week, indicating a full restoration of foundation aid to the 23-24 levels. But there is a decrease in our BOSI's aid, and it results in projections for 24-25 state aid to increase by approximately $330,000. So the net effect on the levy is a decrease on the tax levy of $330,000, causing a reduction to the tax rate per thousand of assessment of $2.51, going from 745.63 to 743.12. And that will drop the median home annual tax payment increase from $1,286 to $1,236, which is approximately a $50 reduction. Last week, we kicked off the season of senior class celebrations with the Rye High School Arts Awards. Seventy-two students received awards, and 13 were recognized by faculty for achievement in their artistic discipline. It really was a terrific evening. And on Thursday, I, along with most of my colleagues at the table, attended the Unified Basketball Game versus Byram Hills. It was the first game for our team for this spring, and then the game ended with a perfect score, 30-30 tie. We have two more home games this season, against North Rockland on Monday, May 13th at 4:15 p.m., and against Portchester on Monday, May 20th at 2:00 p.m., both in the Rye Middle School gym. We'll be spreading the word about these games in hopes of packing the gym in support. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you. And I will just repeat the unbelievable experience that Unified Basketball is. So I would encourage any member of our community to please come out, because it is truly a unique experience that is just wonderful for the whole community to be able to participate and support all of our athletes. So, thank you. So we will now move to our presentation and discussion number one, Critical Thinking.
Good evening. So before I begin, I also would like to thank the teachers and the students for coming to our Critical Thinking Expo tonight. It was wonderful to see all the many ways that critical thinking is being fostered in classrooms, and the wonderful ways that students are really showing the passion for learning, and teachers are showing their passion for teaching. I also would like to thank the principals and the assistant principals for overseeing and supporting the implementation of this learning. Tonight, we'll be highlighting specific critical thinking work at various levels across our district. We have Kim Colachapo here. She's a kindergarten teacher at Midland, and she'll be talking about how she uses vertical surfaces to push critical thinking in her classroom. We have Shanaaz Washington, who is an eighth-grade English teacher. She's here with her student Emily Walsh to show you how they use notebooking to foster critical thinking. And we also have Amy Leahy. She's a high school engineering teacher, and she has two students here, Jonah and Kai, from her Principles of Engineering class, to talk about their latest project. So the work the district is doing around critical thinking is directly connected to the Rye Commitment, and we are really in our third year of having a more strategic focus on critical thinking specifically within the Rye Commitment. Our goal is to increase the level of critical thinking across content areas. And this looks a little bit different from elementary through high school, as you saw this evening, but as you listen to the teachers and the students tonight, hopefully you'll get a sense of what the through line is in the work that we're doing. So we define critical thinking by the act of deliberately analyzing information to make better judgments and decisions. And I think what's really important in that phrase is the word deliberately, because we do teach kids that there is a way to think through a process, and you can be really strategic about it. And when you do that, you can make a more informed decision, or find a better solution, or make a better judgment. We understand that critical thinking involves logic, and reasoning, and creativity in order to draw conclusions and come to a deeper understanding. And we also know that critical thinking is a larger umbrella, and underneath that, and also includes other skills, like questioning, and evaluating, interpreting, and synthesizing, which are all very complex concepts that we work to bring about with students. And all of that takes a lot of professional learning to do that well. And so our professional learning has been going on this year, as it has the last couple of years, but we did things a little bit differently this year. So thanks to our administrative team, they designed four different kind of subtopic learning sessions, and these took place during faculty meetings all year. So teachers had the choice to opt into one of these subtopics, so they could either study questioning and discussion techniques, perspective-taking and bias, reflection and metacognition, or feedback. And so they chose something that they wanted to go deeper with. We sort of gave an overview of those topics last year, and then I was a chance to really get into the more detailed work of understanding what those mean. And we had some really successful faculty meetings. I think we did change the way that we learned. We also did some mixed groupings across buildings. We combined the middle school and high school teachers, so that was also nice to see. So in addition to that learning that everyone did participate in, we also had some more opt-in sessions. There are workshops and service courses that were centered around critical thinking tasks, designing those, and also critical thinking practices that teachers could partake in those options as well. So here's a list of all of the work that you saw tonight during our Critical Thinking Expo. It was a nice variety across a lot of different content areas. And what you'll notice when you think kind of back to the work that you saw tonight, and what you'll hear more about as well, is that these projects share certain characteristics. They all ask students to solve a problem, make a decision, or create something new. They ask that students have -- they are tasks that have multiple good responses or approaches, and they also require much more than just the retrieval of information. There's a lot of collaboration in these as well, I'm sure you noticed that. And it's meaningful for students, and I think you probably picked up on that just from talking to the students alone. Their sheer excitement really shows how meaningful that the work is to them. All right, so we're going to start with Kim Colachapo. I'm going to invite her to come on up to the podium. Kim uses something called vertical surfaces, and she'll tell you more about what that is. This is our kindergarten example of this work, but also know that the vertical surface work is really K-12, and it does go across all content areas. So, Kim.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me today. That's better. Thanks for having me today. If you were out there, you got to see my kindergarteners really doing that critical thinking. For me, critical thinking really starts at a young age. You might be thinking, as other people, "Oh, they're not thinking in kindergarten." Like, they could barely read, they can barely do anything. But if my feeling is if we don't start it there, they're not going to get it anywhere else. Kindergarten, at five years old, they come in, they want to absorb everything you have to give to them. But the best way that they can learn is actually from each other. So I find, I try to take a step back, I give them a task, and then they go for it. Some of the tasks that you have seen, that you saw out there, or in this picture here with Ms. Winderman, we present them with a task. This particular one was in the beginning of the year. I have five apples. Figure out all the ways you can get five apples. I can do two and three, I can do this and this. So in that particular picture, they were only learning how to do circles at that point. A week later, we were like, "Let's go back and see. What else can you do?" They started to put the numbers in. In this picture, you'll see the kids in the middle of the lesson after they've worked with their partners. We all stop, we go around to one board that myself, or if Mrs. Winderman is there with me, have already done the work and circled something that we want the kids to really notice. Do we want the kids to notice how some kids did switch partners when they were adding? Do we want the kids to notice how some kids started with a total instead of just the partners? And we bring all the kids around one board, and we'll say, "Well, what do you notice about what these guys did over here?" And they are learning from themselves. All the language is coming from them. We're not feeding it to them, because they won't remember that. They are actually discovering, and analyzing, and doing all that work on their own. I had taken a class with Mrs. Winderman called Building Thinking Classrooms a few years ago. I've always been an advocate for this. But once taking that class, we added in the vertical surfaces. And if you speak to any of my students, come in anytime, a lot of you have been there, they love it. They think it's fun, they like that you can see it straight on, they like that they don't have to be looking down at a table, that we're constantly moving around the room, and they're learning from each other. And after this little group, after this picture, the kids usually go back to their own areas and try to work on something that they saw at a partner's group, they go try it out on their own. So this is just something, three different strategies for adding team numbers. So our first group was still using the word "and." Another group was using the numbers for their groupings, and the last group switched to that addition sign. All great strategies, all different levels, and they're all learning something from each other. So if that "and" group went around and looked at the plus group, they'd go back and try that out and see where it fit in. So, yeah. So, great. So you may be thinking that critical thinking is really just for math, but in kindergarten, in KC, we do it everywhere. So this is a phonics lesson that we did with the vertical surfaces as well. The kids had to go to a board with a partner, they either had a blend or a digraph, and they just had to write words with that blend or digraph in it. After two minutes, a timer went off, they had to rotate, they had to read the words that their friends wrote, they had to add more words. So at this particular group, when we were done, I had circled, I think this is the group with the digraph that had it at the end of the word, not just at the beginning of the word, and you'll see how the conversation went in our video. Let's take a look at the work that our friends did on this board. Why do you think I circled the words that I circled? Augie, why do you think I circled the words that I circled?
Those words have the TH at the end.
You are correct. So does that mean that our digraphs and blends can come at the end of the word, too?
Yes.
Where else can they come?
In the middle.
Or the...
End.
You guys are awesome. Let's move to our next board. So again, they're just learning from each other. It's great. They think they're playing games all the time, and they don't really even understand the amount of learning that's happening. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kim. Okay, next, I'd like to invite Dr. Washington and Emily Walsh up to talk about notebooking, which is actually a strategy that they've just started this year.
Thank you for having us. I'm Shanaaz Washington. This is my lovely student, Emily Walsh, and we're going to talk a little bit about notebooking. So notebooking is this fantastic tool that I've been using in my classroom to have students really think about, to illustrate really their thinking on paper. And it's wonderful, because it gives them an opportunity to draw, it gives them this white space where they can think, and it also promotes critical thinking and creativity. And the kids are loving it, from every level, to the highest-performing student, to the student who needs a little bit of support. They're just loving it. An example up there is just an example of an assignment that I assigned, and you can see where kids look for symbols, they draw them, there's evidence to support their symbol, and also a little bit of an explanation. And this is just like the tip of the iceberg. They've done beautiful work in their notebooks in my classroom. This is an assignment that I had assigned during the dystopian unit. Students were in book clubs, and I asked them to identify three characteristics of a dystopian society, and to provide text evidence and a visual to go with it. And students created, one particular student chose The Hunger Games for her dystopian text, and the synthesis of the work that she did, along with identifying characteristics, providing text evidence, and just drawing a nexus with the entire element, is so beautiful that I just wanted to share this with you, so thank you. I'm going to have Emily talk a little bit about what she did in her notebook with this particular assignment.
Hi, so I'm Emily. During this unit, we were learning about dystopian societies and what they're made up of. We were able to choose from a few different books, and I chose The Hunger Games by Suzanne Collins. Dr. Washington asked us to create a visual representation of three characteristics of a dystopian novel that were shown in our books. I chose fear of the outside world, surveillance, and propaganda. So notebooking helped us complete this project to the best of our abilities, because it was a tool that helped us organize and express our thoughts. We were able to throw everything that we were thinking onto the page without having to set it up on like a Google Doc where it was hard to lay out a format, or maybe it was, it didn't fit. So during this time, you can maybe lose your train of thought, so being able to write it on the notebook was very helpful. It was also helped us express our creativity. We put a lot of effort and work into this, and being able to draw was kind of like a break from doing something like just sitting at your desk and typing. And we were able to analyze the text deeper, from finding quotes in the text and explaining it, and how it ties together to the rest of the book. We aren't just copying and pasting a picture from Google into our notebooks, we're creating our own original ideas, where we have to explain it with our own words. So for example, the security camera represented in the book how the government constantly watched the people and basically limited their human rights. So, yeah.
So another assignment, which is very different, the students were tasked to write an essay, and I gave them the option of choosing between two different prompts, give them some choice. And then, once the students decided that, you know, whichever argument they wanted to go with, then I had them do outlines in their notebook. So this is an example of how students laid out their thinking. They started with identifying a claim, then trying to support their claim with reasons, and then essentially using text evidence that will help support their claim and their reasons. I gave, I said to students, "Use your dystopian novel," along with, I gave them an article, and then I had them search for an article in the Rye database. And then they were able to pull information from those three sources and synthesize what pieces of evidence they wanted to use for their essay. And so I'm going to have Emily talk a little bit about how she set up her notebook.
For this particular assignment, Dr. Washington gave us a debate topic, and we were able to choose a side that we wanted to state our case. And my topic that I chose was the dangers that migrants face while in pursuit of the American dream are not worth it. We used several different sources to gather credible information. So the first one was a book that we read in class called Enrique's Journey. We also read an article about welcoming immigrants in Daytona, Ohio. And then the last one, we had to find on our own from the Rye City School District databases, and we have to make sure it would support our evidence in the correct way. So how we structured it was we had a claim, reasoning, and evidence to support those. So the claim basically just set up the essay and what it was going to be about, and structured it like, so, the topic. The reasons were our opinions of how it supports the claim, and the evidence was the explanations that we found in the books and articles to support the essay topic. So it was a pretty straightforward organization skill, but we set up in a way that was kind of in chronological order of an essay. So it goes claim, reasoning, evidence. So the notebooks was helpful, because we were able to just like throw it all on there, like I said earlier, without having to be stopped and finding like a hard way to organize our information. So once we got all the information from our articles and books, we put it into bullet points so that it's organized, so when we want to actually start drafting it, it's right there for us. Once we started drafting it, we wrote it on paper, and then our classmates peer-edited it, so that all the grammar and punctuation made sense, and overall, the essay sounded good. Once that was all finished, that's when we actually used the computers and finalized it and made it look nice and neat. So the notebooks just helped us get to that point of the final draft. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, and next is Amy Leahy with her two students, Jonah Campbell-Miller and Kai McCollough.
Look, boys, I got two. I guess I'll choose the larger one. Okay, it's more towards me. Hi, I'm Amy Leahy.
Turn one off and the other one on.
Oh, green. I'll shut that one off. Okay, thank you. And I'm the engineer. Oh, my goodness. My name is Amy Leahy. I teach engineering in the high school. I teach currently IED, POE, aerospace, and civil engineering and architecture. Next year, we're dropping IED, because we always have to critically think, and we have to upgrade. Yes?
Could you tell me what that stands for?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Because I don't know. I'm not an engineer.
Okay. IED was Intro to Engineering Design. That was our intro class, but because we have such a great program in the middle school coming up now, all those kids are well past the intro class, so we have to critically think, and we have to change it. So what I've decided to do was to get rid of IED, and then to make it into two separate classes. One, robotics, because kids love their robots, as you saw in the other room. So we're going to do that. We're going to have, it's going to be a half semester course, and then the other half semester course is going to be modeling, in which they're going to use Fusion 360, which is basically going to allow them to design and model anything that they want, and then we'll 3D print. Hopefully, we'll get a CNC machine, and then maybe we can even take it a step further and do other things. So kids will be able to do different projects that they want to do, something maybe for home, or something for school, maybe another teacher needs something. I was already requested to get doorstoppers. Some teachers were already telling me, "Could you guys do that?" And I was like, "I don't think we can do that, but think of something else for you, and I'll do it."
You might get...
They tried, but I told them, "No." They thought I didn't know, but I knew. And so I basically told the kids, you know, like, anything that you want to design, which my guys back here will show you in a second. The second class is POE, which is what my two students here today are in. That's Principles of Engineering. That engineering class goes basically, it does a mechanical section, a civil section, an electrical section, and it basically shows them all different things about engineering. Then after that, they'll do civil engineering and architecture, which, of course, civil engineering, bridges, dams, buildings, structures, things like that. And then aerospace, airplanes, of course, we all love our airplanes, and rockets and things like that, which the kids are really gunning for. But Principles of Engineering is one of my favorite courses, because it allows the kids to branch into different sections and to see how those sections or those different divisions actually really work together. And the two students I have here today actually came to me with an issue that they had sailing, and they wanted to solve it, so I ended up pulling from IED the Fusion 360, giving them a license and saying, "Go for it. Go start, go start and figure out how to solve that problem." And I will introduce Kai McCullough and Jonah Campbell, and they're here, and they'll talk to you now.
So, yeah, as Ms. Leahy said, I do a lot of sailing, and a common problem that we have is that these pieces on our boats, we have a few samples, we can hand them out, you can see them, they break all the time, and it's really a pain to go get new ones. So I was like, "Well, what if I could just make my own?" They're plastic, they're, you know, make them pretty easily, at least that's my thought. And so I came to Ms. Leahy, and I tried to figure it out, and she told me Fusion 360 was probably the best way to do it. And, yeah, so in Fusion 360, it's a modeling software up there, and it's just...
So essentially, all of these, Fusion 360 is a 3D modeling software that's very, unlike other modeling softwares, it's very logic, very logic-based, very like physical. And Kai, he was able to design this, all those little wind indicators that are printed in black here. They were based off of the initial RED model, which, like Kai said, kept breaking. And he was able to utilize the new school 3D printer that we got working in order to fix this problem that he had, using critical thinking.
It was a little hard at first, because I didn't know anything about Fusion 360, and so I basically had to work from the ground up. It's a sketch-based software, which means like you make it like on a single surface, and then you can either like extrude it or go up. So the first piece, Ms. Leahy, you want to go back, or whoever's going back a slide, there you go. Like, that was the first thing I made, was this middle piece, because I knew I could make a cylinder, and I was like, "All right, so I can do that, so I'll make this." And then, at that point, I was like, "Well, where do I go from there?" And then I had to do my own other research, and look at YouTube tutorials, and think things like that through, and then to make the rest of the body and the other pieces.
I think critical thinking is also really useful when applied to other things that you want to do in everyday life. For example, when the 3D printer was delivered, it was, for the most part, disassembled, so we spent a few days trying, working on it to get it to function properly, and we had to kind of calibrate it in order to be able to print in a good enough quality. There was also different issues regarding kind of just the quality of the prints in general, but through calibration and trial and error, we were able to sort a lot of those issues out.
Tell them about the headless llama.
Right, yes.
That was one of our persons, the headless llama.
So when we first got the 3D printer, there was a whole bunch of files loaded onto it, and we were really excited. We were like, "Oh, we need to, we need to try printing some of these models to see if they would work." And the one we started printing, we're like, "All right." We didn't really know what it was at first. We couldn't see the actual file, it was just the name loaded onto the printer. So we're like, "Okay, this seems cool." So we started printing it, and I think it got like up to the legs as we were of the model that, when we left the school. And when we came back the next morning, the print had actually only gone up about halfway up to the total height of the printer, like, because there's a certain amount of space that the printer can use. And we figured out...
We put it together wrong.
We figured out that we put it together wrong. We figured out that we put it together wrong. So, we had.
So, I have a headless llama in my room.
So, she has a head, now, now she has a headless llama in her room. And it's a nice little pencil case, cause you know, in, in the inside, it's not filled solid, so there's those little slots.
Right.
So, it's, you know, it, you know.
Critical thinking.
Exactly. And then when it doesn't work, you know, make it a pencil.
And we were able to fix it and then it worked.
And then it worked and then we were able, you know.
First they came to me and they were like, you think the machine is broken? And I was like, I don't think it is. And we went and we looked and I was like, what do you think happened? And then they were like, oh, I think this, why don't they put this here? And I was like, well, did they do it or did you? So, they were like, oh. So, I said, but that's okay, you know, they were upset at first. They were like, oh, no, we have to take everything apart. I was like, just look at it, critically think it's okay, you know. They were a little worried, cause they were like, we don't wanna damage it. I said, you won't. Take your time and, and figure out how to do it, you know, so. And they did, they're fabulous kids, so.
Kai, I have a question on these. So, they're breaking all the time, you now make new ones. Are these breaking all the time? Do you have a theory as to what you could do so that they don't? I mean, I imagine they're getting hit by the sail and different things on the boat.
We are, that's why we have a bunch of different ones and some of you might notice like there's a white little strip on the side of them. Some do, some don't, but these are the infills. So, we're testing different infills, see if that'll make it break. And then if they do keep breaking in the same design, we'll see where they break, right? Cause they're still, we're not completely done with this, right?
Right.
There's always more to be said and more to be done. But if they keep breaking in the same spots, then we'll probably reinforce them and that is part of the plan.
So far, is to re, keep reinforcing them and keep, keep testing.
And just to clarify, infill is kind of the density of, like, you're able to, most prints you wanna do with a relatively low density is to not use as much filament, but with a print like Kai has here, it's relatively small in size and you want it to be, have as much structural stability as possible, so you wanna.
And 3D printers actually take different types of like plastics and some are stronger than others. So, we only currently have PLA, but if we wanted to test it, we would use a stronger or different filament to see if, see if that would work better. But we currently have those.
More filaments like ABS, which is more, it's more rigid and I think it's more heat resistant. And filaments like TPU, which are kinda more flexible. So, if Kai would, if Kai had an issue, the models kept breaking because they were really like, they were really stiff and kept like running into things and breaking. He could try and print them in a softer filament that might work better for him, but it, it would really, you would have to try out things and we would have to figure out how to make the different filaments work. But, yeah.
Experiment.
Experiment, critically think.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. I thought we were getting souvenirs. You could go with all my dinosaurs in the office.
So, in terms of next steps with critical thinking, we're never really done with this work. As you can see, we've, we have had a lot of growth since last year when we did the Critical Thinking Expo. We've expanded the work around critical thinking. I think it's, it's extending across more content areas and doing more within each content area. So, we will be continuing to do more of the same. We, we have been starting learning walks and we would wanna, we wanna expand this practice so teachers can see teachers doing this work. I think that's a, it kind of, it inspires colleagues to take it on as well. And also, we will continue looking at our curriculum, continue, continue to revamp, redesign units. A lot of the work that you saw tonight was new between this year and last year. So, we'll continue to look at how can we develop critical thinking challenges for students within our curriculum. And then we'll be continuing our professional learning. Mostly, we'll, during our admin retreat, we'll be designing what the critical thinking work will look like for teachers next year, but it will probably be focused more around designing those critical challenges and looking for places to do that. So, so thank you and we're happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. That's always the best part of any of our meetings, are hearing from our students and getting to see the work that our teachers and our students do. So, thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board?
It's all fantastic. The Expo is fantastic. Thanks.
I think a couple of things that I really appreciated about the kindergarten talk about the vertical surfaces is talking to my freshman son, who is working with vertical surfaces. And so, this idea that, you know, the five-year-olds and the 15-year-olds, who are quite different in some ways developmentally, some more further along than others at certain points, but using those same materials and those same learning styles and having and finding success in their development and their thinking, I think is phenomenal. And I just wanna, one of the things that you talked about was kind of reaching out beyond the class, you know, the, what we've seen and reaching out. And one of the questions that I asked students tonight, when I was talking with them, was saying to them, where else would you see this type of experience happening in your school or in your daily instruction? And so, for, it was interesting, for the ones with the science research that they had done in seventh grade, they said, well, this would actually be a really great thing for us to do in social studies and in English. And so, then I, you know, hear Dr. Washington's presentation about the notebooks. And the kids are already seeing those connections and those possibilities. And so, the idea that we're gonna keep pushing the teachers and hoping to make it more accessible for all of the teachers, just the kids want it. And the kids already see where those connections are possible is really exciting for what could be a real great, just adaption across the board, between the excitement of kids and students and teachers.
And the interdisciplinary units that are being developed and already started to be implemented at the middle school are great examples of that work going across English Language Arts, Social Studies, and different content areas.
Yeah, there really is an in for everyone, no matter what you're teaching. It's just where, where are you gonna be, where will you either continue or bring the critical thinking work into your teaching? And I think that sometimes when you put groups of teachers together, like in the interdisciplinary work that we saw from the middle school right now, the collaboration that we're seeing, that's what's growing and making that work amazing, is that the true collaboration from the teachers. So, we'll be looking for more opportunities to do that, because I think that's where the best work comes from.
Yeah, I was, I was, first of all, thank you all. This was fantastic. It's always wonderful to walk around and see and talk to the kids, because they are so, it's just, it's, it's amazing to me how they can stand there, and especially the little ones, but even for the older kids, and, and repeat with the same amount of energy, everything that they have done, because they're so excited about it and they have truly learned something from it and discovered something within themselves as a part of that learning. So, I, I just appreciate always having the opportunity to see students light up about all of that. And, and you mentioned, Tricia, like the expansion from last year even into this year, which is, is fantastic, even grade level-wise and throughout elementary into secondary. And so, what, I guess, what are the ways in which you're trying to see how that, how you can make more strides in expanding into maybe some of the, the grade levels or areas that have not yet quite picked up on this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure there's an easy answer to that. I think you just have to look for the opportunities and you have to have conversations with teachers about it. Sometimes they'll see something that you don't see. I think that we're bringing in a new science curriculum at the elementary level. There's a huge opportunity to bring in critical thinking and bring, and bring in our maker spaces. So, what are some activities we can design to go along with those units? To just increase the number of experiences that we're giving kids every year. Cause you add that up across K-12 and, and your student's gonna graduate with a lot of good problem-solving skills.
But I also think that the structure and design of the faculty meetings, away from these times when principals would have an agenda that was a long list of administrivia type things, to dedicated times where teachers are learning together and studying together, it, it just becomes a natural outgrowth of those conversations. For some, it takes a little longer because of fear and anxiety, but the, the supports in having the staff developers that are there to work with them, Diane Cunningham, who's been here to guide our teachers in the planning process, and then the learning walks. And when they start walking around, because it, it's one thing to hear it from us or a consultant or a staff developer. It's another thing to walk into their colleague's classroom and see it, hear it, feel it, experience it with the kids right there. And that there and the planning time that comes together is where you start to see acceleration. And we've talked about that with a lot of things over the years, you know, you, it's a slow start, but then you get to a tipping point where it seems like it's really on fast-forward at that point. I think we're really right at that place, where we saw tremendous growth this year. I think we're at a launch point in that, that acceleration of this work.
Well, it seems like this is a natural outgrowth of where we started a few years ago with project-based learning.
Yes.
Which maybe didn't have the same amount of, I don't know, tentacles to get out in, in the, in the structure in which it started.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so, it's, it's really great, cause I think the concept is very similar, but this, this is a different way of getting to those same elements that we're trying to make sure kids are, are building in, in their skill areas.
Right, we started that with, you know, a small cohort of teachers. It was a cohort base, so it was focused on specific people who were opting in. We've now evolved that and iterated to the point that everybody's involved in the learning experience. And that's opening up opportunities and experiences for many more kids across the entire system. Instead of saying, oh, how do I get? And I've had that conversation years ago with parents, saying, how do I get one of those PBL fellows as my teacher? So, we don't, everybody's a, you know, a critical thinking fellow, because of the way that we've structured, you know, and taken things that exist, structures that exist, like faculty meetings. And, and I will tell you, and, and Jim and Joe are in the room, they will tell you, they've had resistance from people who want faculty meetings to be the way they used to be. But it's the standing up and saying, we're never going back to those kinds of meetings because we're doing much, so much more important work. All that other stuff can be covered in my Friday memo or my Midland Matters that gets to everybody. And all that information's available and easy to access, but the learning from each other and the deep thinking around what we're doing with kids, we only have so much time to do that together and this is the time we're gonna do it. And, and it's just, that resistance is fading, quite frankly.
Well, and I loved on the professional learning slide, talking about the teacher choice, cause there is, everyone comes at it from a different angle and that's what I saw with the students at the Expo, was the most excited they were, they all had a choice in a crossroads to find their passion and where they wanted to move the project forward. And empowering that at the professional learning level just creates, you know, a successful outcome for everybody, cause there's, you create that buy-in by allowing somebody to direct their path, even though the critical thinking is not a choice.
Controlled choice, that's what we call that.
Well, and it's also, it becomes ingrained. It's not a project, it's.
It's a practice.
It's the way of work, right.
Exactly. So, it becomes ingrained in your everyday. And, you know, I know Mrs. Colachapa was, I remember seeing her here last year with her kindergartners with their pencil case.
Yes.
And, and seeing it again, and I'm sure that you've seen sort of, having had that more intentional approach started last year and then, then carrying it over to this year, I, I can only imagine that you've seen so many different ways of kind of approaching how you would want to do this with the kids, to, to kind of give them that sense of how do they dive down a little deeper.
To your point, it has to become daily practice, not, I'm just gonna do it today and next month I'll try it again.
Right.
It has to become what you do.
Right.
So, you know, for math, I'll draw a picture in math, and multiple pages, but you'll focus on the picture and you will critically think that day about that particular picture and that's our math lesson. You just have to embed it in all of your day, not just to a point, drawing specifically. Project and work done for that. Check, box is done.
Right.
That's not big, that's not the way to do it.
Right.
Well, and when we talk and we look at our data, our student data, we talk so often about how we are very fortunate to have many students who are able to perform relatively highly on standardized tests and our NWEA test and other tests. And through the use of critical thinking and really, you're, you're pushing students in those margins. And critical thinking, as you said, is something that's well beyond just a science unit or a math unit. It is English, it is teaching. I'd look at the student notebooks in eighth grade and I think, gosh, I would've probably been like a way better writer when I was in high school if I had had somebody who took the opportunity to explicitly teach me how to be a critical thinker. Cause that's exactly what that is. And it's not doing it in science or a math challenge, it's how you learn. And so, the opportunities for really helping across the board are just gonna be dynamic.
Well, if, if you think about it, we, you know, years ago, we, we started talking about the skills and strategies that we were really zooming in on and focusing on in our reading workshop with kids. You have to be very explicit in the teaching and they're using their post-its and they're saying things out loud. And they're doing all those things that by the time they get to Dr. Washington's class, they're doing those things automatically. And it's the same thing with critical thinking. We have to provide lots and lots of opportunities. We have to give them the language, give them the experience, give them the practice, so that these things become automatic. And when they, they end up in eighth grade or they end up with Ms. Leahy in engineering, that's why we have to stop offering the one class, because those skills and strategies that that class offered them are now obsolete because of what they've already learned coming before, which is one of the most exciting things. I mean, you know, when you, really, you get to abandon a class, because our kids are beyond that by the time you're supposed to offer it. What could be better than that?
Well, and we've had that fortune, good fortune with our FLESS program in Spanish and we've had that with our math class in our incoming sixth graders of having, right, now having to do math. I mean, it's, it's a wonderful experience to be at a place where things are starting to pull together and to see the things that are happening. And so, as I say all the time, this is not easy work and it is work that we are fortunate to be able to have done in this district and it is because we have teachers who are committed to our students and we have administration who are committed to our teachers. So, we thank you all very much for that.
Thank you, and thank you out there.
Yes, thank you all for coming. Wonderful. So, we will now move on to the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We have no public, so I will refrain from reading our statement this evening. However, as always, we encourage and love to hear from the public and so, we would remind the community that you may always submit written comments to the board by sending them to rcsd@, oh, no, sorry. See, I'm gonna see if you're paying attention.
I, I would like to just add, we, we had quite a public at the Critical Thinking Expo earlier this evening, so I think they might've been tired from talking to all the kids.
Well, from all that critical thinking, they needed to go home and take a nap. I know I do, cause it was great. Okay, so, we will move on to our consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Christopher Pedo, seconded by Kelsey Johnson. Let's take a look at tonight's consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Consent agenda pupil personnel services and special education. Consent agenda curriculum instruction and assessment. Seeing no questions, can I have a vote to approve tonight's consent agenda? All those in favor? That's six, zero with one absence. So, on this evening's consent agenda, we have an RFP that was awarded for our internal claims auditing, which highlights the district's continued commitment to our financial responsibility and good stewardship. We also are accepting a gift from the Rye Football Boosters Association in the amount of $9,315 for new uniforms for the 24-25 season, which as much as I'd like to think is far away, the new school year is actually quickly approaching as this one is quickly ending. All a little too soon. We also are approving the merger for the girls and boys swimming and diving teams with our local. with our local school districts of Rhineck and Blindbrook for the '24-'25 seasons, as well as an approval of the merger for the boys' wrestling with Rhineck for the '24-'25 season. Additionally, we have an agreement with Carl Anderson for professional learning with our teachers, which will take place on June 27th and 28th. Because as I like to point out, when the schools are closed, our teachers are still learning. And so they will be here on the first day after the last day of school to start their summer learning. We never sleep here at this district. It's good to see. Okay, so moving on, we have presentation and discussion, too. Mrs. Boyle.
Thank you. So this is our second review of the changes made to the student harassment and bullying intervention policy. I did not receive any comments from the last review, so I'm assuming we're good. So we can move that forward for adoption of these changes at our next meeting.
Great. Okay, excellent, thank you. We have communications to and from the board. We had a policy committee meeting, which I assume may have had some information and discussion.
We did have some information and discussion in our policy meeting. So we continued to do a lot of work on our code of conduct and have a lot of discussion around updates, potential updates to that. That is an ongoing process, so at some point, we will be bringing that forward. I don't know exactly when, but we will. We also had a discussion around our current policy related to international exchange students, and that will be coming up on our next board agenda. And then we also had a good discussion around the pros and cons of looking at social media policy. And this was focused mainly around employee use of social media. And based on our conversation, at this point, there was the, the thought process was that a policy is not the next step, but to look at it from a training and guidance standpoint for employees. And so we'll start at that point, and then, you know, go from there if necessary. But at this point, acceptable use also already covers much of having to do with, not social media specifically, but communications from employees and appropriateness. So that was the, those were our big topics.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Our future meeting, we have health and safety on May 16th, and Mr. Stein is our board rep, so I will be reminding him of that meeting. And then Ms. Boyle, just if you could put that on your tickler.
It's already on there.
You're in the backup, so May 16th.
I hope so.
All right, excellent. Do we have anything from pedestrian safety, Ms. Johnson? No, you guys are all good?
Although the Police Department with, or TPS wanting to meet with the crossing guards, so...
Yes, I guess TPS does have a request out in a hope to coordinate a coffee with our community partnership, our crossing guards, really in an effort to, one, say thank you from the Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Committee, but also to solicit feedback on any thoughts there, you know, within the community, and just trying to understand if they would have any recommendations. So I did reach out to John Hawkins and Commissioner Copie in hopes to coordinate something for the spring, just to get some feedback and see if there's anything for next fall to kind of think about to improve the safety around the schools. So that will be hopefully something that gets planned, and we can update afterwards.
I think that's a great idea, because as a driver, I can tell you, I'm sure those crossing guards see lots, so I'm sure they'll have lots of good information that could be useful to help with our traffic and safety.
I'm going to need your recommendations on where to get the treats, because I have, we have to entice them with, so we'll talk.
I got you taken care of, don't you worry, Kelsey, I'm on it. I'm already thinking of yummy things. It's all, you just said treats, and I got excited. All right, is there any communication from other board members? We're all good? Okay, so our next meeting is going to be next Tuesday, May 7th, and we will have our budget hearing. So with that being said, we are all done here. So can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Christopher Petto, seconded by Sean Clever. All those in favor? That's six, nothing, one absence. Thank you, and have a good evening.